I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 20th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At 5:30, we had a work session to give us an update on the North Carolina floodplain mapping program, and I think we're going to have a short presentation on that later in the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Randy Blanchard from Pillmore United Methodist to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we give you so much thanks for this land and the citizens of the place we call Currituck. And as we come to you in this evening, we come praying for our government and the officials who are here to lead us in this government. We pray that their decisions here tonight might be wise decisions and informed decisions, and ones that are worthy in your sight. Continue to make us ever mindful of the ways in which you have blessed us, and that we might always give you praise and honor, for it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. This time, before we approve the agenda, I have a couple budget amendments we need to add under, let's see here, under the consent agenda, item one, budget amendments. We have a budget amendment request from the Knott's Island Fire Department to move money within their budget to buy some turnout gear. We have a budget amendment from the Planning Department to move money within the department for an intern. We have a budget amendment from the Sheriff's Department for temporary salaries within her own budget, and we have a budget amendment for communications to move money within the department for overtime training. That's all the amendments.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have two people signed up. First is Ms. Teresa McPherson, and I ask you to please restate your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teresa McPherson, the president with the Walnut Island Property Owners Association. My property address is 117 Evans Drive in Grandy. I'd like to address the board this evening regarding a situation that occurred back in 2001, and I, along with our Board of Directors, are working diligently to correct this error. And so, if you'll bear with me for a moment, I have some packets I just want to pass out. If you'll pass these to the commissioners, there's two there for each. Appreciate it. And I'm going to read this to you. Essentially, what we're doing is, thanks to the county for the updates on the UDOs, it has changed Walnut Island from a recreational community to a residential community. And naturally, that brings along many changes to our covenants, needs for changes. And there were many needs prior to that as well, I can assure you. But having said that, there are some obstacles to overcome. And so, we have launched a campaign, so this presentation is not only for your benefit, but also hopefully for the Walnut Island property owners. I hope that if they're watching at all, or watch a recording, that they will understand what this is about and where we're coming from. So if you'll bear with me, it says, "Dear property owner, investing in a property with an association is similar to investing in a mutual fund. When you make the purchase, you become one of many owners in that corporation. The more property you purchase, the greater number of shares you own in that corporation, providing more rights and more responsibilities. In this case, a shareholder is known as an associate, not a member. You have purchased, therefore, you do not join, you own. Your rights and responsibilities as a shareholder in the Walnut Island Property Owners Association Incorporated ensures tremendous benefits to you as a landowner. Unlike property owners located outside of an association, you own your property and shares of the corporation. These shares are common areas and assets of the community of Walnut Island, and add value to your investment. The added benefits that you have as a voice, excuse me, the added benefits are that you have a voice in your community, and how your community develops collectively, we have a voice with our state and county governments, because you have a say. This ensures that the value of your investment is protected. What is important to remember is that you don't ever want to forfeit these rights. When the associates stop exercising their rights and privileges, the value of the community diminishes. The physical benefits we share as associates are the use of the properties and assets we own in the corporation. In our case, this means the clubhouse located on Ferris Drive, and it belongs to you and to your fellow associates. The clubhouse is available throughout the year for personal use at no additional expense as an associate in good standing." And then it goes on to describe the benefits of that building. Then it goes on to describe the expenses of the association, and this letter will go out to all of the property owners. I want to go on, skip down several paragraphs, to the second to the last on the second page. The intangible assets of the associate would be, excuse me, association would be the administrative work. Through all of your Board of Directors and the officers volunteer their time and their expenses to the work they do. And it goes on to explain what those expenses occur and what happens there. If you'll skip to the third page, you have likely heard the term "in good standing" many times. All that means is that the property owner has maintained his or her responsibility for what he or she owns. Each year, associates pay a portion of the expenses for the proper maintenance of all of their corporately owned properties and assets. This portion is currently set at $60 a year, or $5 a month. There are 738 properties in Walnut Island, not including the corporately owned one. This number reflects the properties that have been combined to enlarge a lot for building. Of the 739 properties, there are currently 495 property owners. Unfortunately, only 221 associates continue to protect their investment and ensure their rights. This shortfall places everyone's investment at risk. Dear neighbor of Walnut Island, you are the true asset of this community. Your involvement is vital to achieving the vision that I dare to believe we all share. If you have any questions or concerns, you're welcome to contact me. The mission of this corporation is to unify the community, protect property values, maintain compliance with restrictive covenants of record, and further develop the community in its own best interest. Our values demonstrate our belief and commitment to our community to promote neighborhood unity, responsible ownership, and financial strength. Ladies and gentlemen, back in 2001, a petition was circulated that would dissolve the association, or at the very least, release the property owners who live on a state-maintained road from being financially responsible for their ownership. That petition was submitted to the county, and for whatever reason, it was accepted. It was never challenged by the Board of Directors at that time. I couldn't tell you why, but unfortunately, it's created a great deal of damage in our community. And you have watched Walnut Island deteriorate for a number of years. We are in danger. We are in danger of financially becoming bankrupt, and we are in danger of losing a community that is valuable to Currituck County, and I believe that with all my heart. I am asking you to support us in this campaign to overturn this petition. I don't know what it's going to take. We've talked with attorneys, but they are telling me that we would have to launch a new petition for those property owners who have been released from that responsibility, that paragraph 13 in the covenants, to reincorporate them. I submit to you that we have 221 property owners paying for the entire responsibility of this community. And those property owners who have been released from those covenants still have ownership and rights to that community. So I hope you'll understand where I'm coming from tonight, and why I've come before you, and I hope that you'll support us in making these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPherson. Mr. McCree, will you be able to, I know this, you're probably not prepared to make a recommendation to us, but can you research this and give us more information from our perspective, what exactly transpired and what this means?
I'd be glad to, and I will get up with Ms. McPherson and see if we can't, I can't get a better understanding of the issue and be able to report back to the board.
Because I will say that Ms. McPherson and the folks in Walnut Island have worked pretty feverishly to try to clean up some places that desperately needed cleaning and get the sense of community in there, and I certainly want to know what our responsibilities or support we can do to help.
I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
John Morrison is, I think, working with him, so maybe you guys can come up with a game plan together.
Okay. I'll speak with John Morrison also.
Am I right, John Morrison?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McPherson. Next, we have Commissioner Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I had a phone call from Gloria Carr. She lives on Toz Bay Colony, we're in Toz Bay Colony, and recently, they had a fire up there. And the house was engulfed, and people lost their homes. But their dog got out safely, because it had a pet safe door. And she called to let me know that pet safe makes a lot of different doors and other equipment for animals, and that they were offering a chance to any county or city who wanted to apply in a contest to win $100,000 to build a pet park. And as a county applies for grants all the time to assist us in building different things, I thought that this would be an idea that was worth looking into. And so, I went to the website, downloaded it, and sure enough, we can enter a contest with the signature of the county manager or officials, and since we have the land that we already have proposed for a dog park, be able to perhaps win this contest and win $100,000, or perhaps $25,000 to defray the costs that is going to be encumbered when and if we get this project off the ground. And so, with the concurrence of my fellow commissioners, I would just like to present this contest rules and everything, and let the county manager research this and see if we could not go ahead and submit the letter and become a contestant in this. I know my old hometown of Huntington, West Virginia, was the first municipality that won $100,000. And so, the contest has been going on, and it's something I think that would behoove the county to look into. It's nothing more than a grant, and we've applied for many different grants that have not been successful. So I would like to ask my fellow commissioners if they would conclude and help me if we could perhaps make it in the form of a motion, and to pass this on to the manager so that he might look at this and see if it's worthwhile for the county.
Does it require a match, or is it?
No. We've got the land, and the only thing we have to do is make the application. There are rules in here. Staff would have to do a few things, and then it would be a matter of advertising it and getting support from the county themselves, from the county residents themselves, in actually going online and voting.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
So that's what it is.
Did you make a motion, or did you make a motion?
If you're making a motion, I'll second it.
I made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Gilbert seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As you give this to the county manager, I would ask that he give us a short executive summary of
What entails.
What it entails. I'm sure he had plenty of time.
To do that. Thank you, Gloria, for your input and for making me aware of it.
All right. That's the only ones we have signed up. Did, Ms. Gilbert, do you?
I'll wait till Ms. just comes in.
Okay. Anyone didn't have a chance to speak that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments and move to administrative reports. We have an update on the North Carolina floodplain mapping program at this time. We have some guests, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and they may not bring totally bad news to Currituck, so.
Good evening. My name is Randy Munt. I work with the State of North Carolina in emergency management in the National Flood Insurance Program and the Floodplain Mapping Program. State of North Carolina was the first cooperating technical partner in the nation to actually be doing the flood insurance rate mapping for FEMA. We started that after Hurricane Floyd in 2001. Since that date and time, we've been able to update all 100 counties in North Carolina. We're in the process of going back and maintaining those maps. FEMA's goal is to have these maps current within every five years. In North Carolina, the last time we updated maps that related to coastal flood processes, we did not do a new model for the coastal flooding. We used an older model and rectified that model with better topography that we got back in 2000. That model was last updated in 1981. Over the past four years, the Floodplain Mapping Program has been working to update with a new model, taking into consideration advances in science and technology since then, obviously a longer period of record, and also incorporating some of the lessons learned from the Gulf Coast, Hurricane Katrina, et cetera. So I'm just here to give you a little bit of an overview of the National Flood Insurance Program and how that may affect Currituck County, also bringing to light some recent legislation at the federal level. So I'll just tell you that the National Flood Insurance Program has three purposes. It is to identify floodplain areas and flood risk zones, so that property owners, as they choose to do any development activities, can take that risk into consideration. The National Flood Insurance Program also provides flood insurance through the federal government, and it also provides a framework for community floodplain management ordinances. It is a voluntary program. No community is required to participate, but of course, there is a carrot and a stick approach to participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. Communities that do, their citizens can buy flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. Whether they're in a flood risk zone or not, communities that do not participate do not have that benefit. So the benefits include being able to buy flood insurance, also in the event of a flood disaster, the federal agencies are able to approve loans, grants, payments, subsidies, rebates, acquisition or construction purposes within those special flood hazard areas, and state and federal disaster assistance can be made available to damaged structures in those special flood hazard areas. In North Carolina, all 100 counties do participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, as well as 467 municipalities. There are 50 communities that are not in the National Flood Insurance Program in North Carolina, although they have identified special flood hazard areas. Again, it is a voluntary program. Back in July, federal government passed the Bigget Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012. It extended financing and authority for the National Flood Insurance Program through 2017. Over the past several years, Congress has been having a hard time being able to do anything other than kick the can down the road. Since 2008, Congress passed 18 different stopgap measures for reauthorization, and they finally said, okay, we're going to do this with a little bit more comprehension to it, and they cite it as BW-12. It is primarily an insurance-loaded legislation, and in the National Flood Insurance Program, there's one term that's kind of important to remember, and that's pre-firm versus post-firm. Firm is an acronym that stands for Flood Insurance Rate Map, and a pre-firm structure would be one that was built prior to any flood insurance rate map being made available to the community. In Currituck County, that's 1982, and some of the legislation for Bigget Waters 12 is that pre-firm subsidies, those are structures that were built prior to any knowledge of risk, built in compliance with codes at that time. Those flood insurance policies have been subsidized throughout the United States, and non-primary residences, and that's basically if they don't live in the house at least 80% of the time, those subsidies will be removed, and they will be removed phased out at a rate of 25% per year until they achieve full actuarial risk. Also, business properties and severe repetitive loss properties, those also will be seeing their subsidies phased out at 25% per year. A pre-firm subsidized rate can be rated to full risk once you sell your property, if there is a lapse in insurance coverage, if there is a substantial damage, or if you have done an improvement to that structure, that is 30% or greater of the value of that property. Properties that were not insured as of the Bigget Waters 12 enactment, and if a property has been given an offer for mitigation and they refuse that grant. The pre-firm subsidized rates across the nation is a rather small component of the overall policies in the nation. It's about 5% of the policies have pre-firm subsidies. There are also discount rates called grandfathering, and those will also be phased out with the BW-12. For any property that is newly mapped into a special flood hazard area and/or subject to a revised map, any property that is located or is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program will have that rate charged for flood insurance on such property adjusted to accurately reflect the current risk of the flood to such property. They are anticipating, and they haven't really been able to finalize this yet, if Congress passes the legislation, and then it's up for FEMA to come up with the guidelines and how are they going to roll out what that wish was. We anticipate that, starting in October, or certainly late 2014, grandfathering of those rates will go away. How does that affect Currituck County? Currituck County should be receiving preliminary data sometime this fall. The due process of going through reviewing preliminary data and having that achieve the threshold of effectiveness for insurance rating purposes and for floodplain management purposes is probably going to be about a year. So realistically, you won't see any effects from Bigget Waters for grandfathering until at least January of 2015. Okay, so on average, this is again nationwide, they're averaging about a 10% increase in flood insurance premiums, starting October of 2013. If you're in a V-zone, that will probably average 11% increase if you're post-firm, or 17% if you're pre-firm. The AE-zone post-firm increase of roughly 6%, pre-firm 16%, and then the standard or the preferred risk policies, 1%, may be going up 19%. These are the dates that you need to be concerned about. July is when the legislation was passed. In January, the subsidized rates were phased out for non-primary residences that are pre-firm. October of this year, you're going to see the subsidized rates getting phased out at 25% per year for business properties, severe repetitive loss properties, and others, they're moving to full risk. And then probably in October of 2014, anticipating the loss of the grandfathering. This is a lot of slide to talk through, but basically, it's applying logic. If your risk is high, your premiums are going to be high. If your risk is low, your premiums will be lower. If you're transitioning from a lower risk zone to a higher risk zone, commensurate premium increase as well. So how can we help our citizens save money on flood insurance? Fortunately, Currituck County participates in the community rating system. That's one way for property owners that have policies to achieve, and Currituck, I think you're a Class 8, so those properties are paying 10% less through participating in the community rating system, which is what the community, the county, is doing that has higher standards than what the minimum standards are in the NFIP. You can also encourage citizens to participate in grant programs for rebuilding, for relocating, for mitigating, elevating utilities, et cetera, and also you can encourage them to maybe take on some higher deductibles and lower premium costs. But again, bottom line is, if you know where the risk is at, heed that, what is the base flood elevation? Heed where that location is. If you have the option to build outside of that risk zone, that would probably be the safer way to build. And that is the sum of what I had to say.
Yes, sir.
Is this presentation available so we can share it with
Yes, sir.
Our residents?
Yep. It's on this laptop here.
Okay. Is this something we can get to our clerk and have her pass it?
I'm certain that is very doable. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Add it to the website. Is that what you mean? Yeah, I'm sure that can be done.
Add it to the Dropbox.
Anyone else have any questions? We certainly thank you. You spent quite a bit of time with us this evening, and we appreciate it.
My pleasure. If you have any other questions, myself or Maureen O'Shea, who used to work with the county, who is the NFIP Eastern Branch Planner, certainly ready to answer and try and help you.
I think the big event is when the preliminary maps come out sometime around September-ish, the fall. That's when people really need to look and see where you fall in those maps.
And those maps will come with a tool that can show you how the maps have changed. Where was the risk before? What is it now? Or what is it proposed to be?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think there's one other point that's pretty important. It was to me. The county will be establishing a point of contact to be able to answer questions, a single point of contact, to answer questions that the citizens may have regarding their individual pieces of property. So I don't know who that person for sure is going to be yet, but we will be putting that together and be advertising it. I think that's important.
Absolutely. With that, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next, we have a special guest from the Interfaith Community Outreach to give us an overview and an update of their organization.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. My name's Jennifer Albanese. I'm the Executive Director of Interfaith Community Outreach. We serve DARE and Currituck County residents. We're open on Wednesdays in Currituck County, and we just moved to Mount Zion Church. So we're open 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. On the beach, we're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. We see Currituck County residents at the beach office on all three of those days, because they may work at the beach, or they may have an emergency during the days that they're not open. I do have a PowerPoint. Okay. All right. So this is a review of 2012. The mission of the Interfaith Community Outreach is to provide assistance to people who are facing a temporary emergency crisis in both DARE and Currituck County. We are a 501(c)(nonprofit). Typical funding is 85% private, 15% public. We're supported by 50 different faith-based churches up and down the beach, from Hatteras all the way up to Moyoc. Board of Directors, we have 20 board members, more than 75 volunteers, both counties, some work in both offices. I'm the full-time staff, and we just hired a part-time staff. All right. What we do, we help people that come in who are facing a temporary emergency crisis, the key word is temporary. We give referrals to other agencies, social services, Department of Social Services, both counties, food banks, community care clinic, Outer Banks Relief Foundation, Hotline, HopeLine, Red Cross Counseling Services. They may come in with cancer, cancer support groups. So we're, not always do we give monetary outreach. The answer may be they don't know all the services in their county to get help. We also do home rehab. We do a lot of them in DARE and Currituck County, mostly ramps for elderly people that social services, most of our referrals come from, for ramps. And we also manage DARE County's emergency management during any natural disaster. The last one we did was Hurricane Irene. Our volunteers man the phone lines. There's a disaster recovery committee, and we answer the phone for them, direct them. Excuse me. Excuse me. We also give all of the outreach. Anybody that had hurricane damage for Irene would come to the Interfaith Community Outreach. We would interview them, pay for whatever damage that they had that wasn't covered by insurance, maybe putting them up in a hotel, and maybe we're still rebuilding houses in Stumpy Point. All of the funding that was donated goes to the Outer Banks Community Foundation. I would spend the funds, and then we would get reimbursed. I also did get a grant from the North Carolina Community Foundation for Currituck County residents during Hurricane Irene. Sandy, we didn't really have too much damage. 2012 donations, grants, and fundraising. We raised $282,000. 2011, $290,000. So very similar. Outreach was very similar. $223,000 went out, just monetary outreach. That's no in-kind donations. And in 2011, $228,000. Operational expenses, rent, any insurance, salaries, that's all in that budget. Deficit from reserves, last year, $53,000. 2011, $26,000. Families served, little bit less for 2012, and that's due to Hurricane, $1,139 in 2011. All right, in 2012, we helped with foreclosures and for rental evictions. 176 families. Utilities, water and electricity bills, 167. All others, that's medical, food, gas, transportation vehicles donated, 491. Referrals to DSS Hotline, Outer Banks Relief Foundation, 336 referrals. Home rehab, we did four. And Hurricane Irene and Sandy, 59. And you'll see the numbers on 2011 were increased, and that is because of Hurricane Irene. This is the comparisons for Dare and Currituck County for 2012. The money raised for Dare County residents was $258,902, and Currituck County, $45,897. Client outreach, $168,000 for Dare and $54,000 for Currituck. Deficit or surplus, Dare County had a surplus, and Currituck County had a deficit of almost $9,000. Families served, 711 families in Dare County, 227 families in Currituck County. That's approximately 2,300 individuals total. So Dare County's seeing, Currituck County's seeing a third of what Dare County's doing. So, but the need is there, as you can see. 2011 and 2010 were slightly higher, about $60,000 in client outreach for both of those years. Let's see. This is 2013, as of April. We are seeing, we're up 250 families served from 232. Rent and mortgage is down a little bit, 43. Utilities is up, 61, compared to 33, and that's due to energy share funds. Salvation Army has not had very much of it this year, where last year we had more. Department of Social Services in Currituck County has not had any funding, or the funding that they have are not helping the clients. All other, gas, food, medical, 111 to 144. Referrals are about the same at 100. Home rehab, we have done five this year. And Hurricane Irene or Sandy, six compared to 28 in last year, same time. So we're going into our 10th year as a 501(c)(nonprofit, so this is pretty extraordinary. The amount of people served is 13,657. Monetary outreach to both communities is $1,158,000. In 2004, we served 328 people, and in 2012, we served 2,277 people. So this is something that we're, you know, very proud of, being able to give all this assistance to our neighbors in need. And that's the next question. If we didn't exist, who would bridge the gap to our neighbors in need? We don't duplicate any services with any other nonprofit, so we are there to help our community. 2013 key challenges is conserving our reserve funds, staying within our mission when dealing with repeat clients. As you know, with Currituck County, I know the unemployment rate says it's extremely low, but the clients coming in maybe are not on that list, and it is a real issue that we're having with repeat clients. Increasing active partnerships with our faith communities and other community organizations and businesses in Currituck County, and continue to recruit new volunteers. How can you help? If you know of somebody in need, please send them over to Currituck County at Mount Zion, Wednesday from 10:00 to 2:00, or to the beach, Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10:00 to 2:00. Become a financial supporter. Encourage citizens to continue or become volunteers and financial supporters of Interfaith Community Outreach. And I thank you all, and I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have.
I don't have a question. I can just tell you that our church participates with the Interfaith Outreach, and the money that we give is used, in our opinion, pretty well. And we thank you and recognize what you do.
And Coin Jack Baptist Church, Coin Jack Baptist, and we thank the church very much. Our churches in Currituck County are extremely strong. If you compare to Dare County and Currituck County, both are giving very well. It's our individuals in Dare County are about $60,000 of revenue, where in Currituck County, I only maybe $1,000. Same with the businesses in Dare County, it's about $10,000, where I've got about $1,000 in Currituck County. So I'm really just trying to hit the pavement, meet lots of people, and it's hard when you got from one county to the other, but we really need to serve Currituck County residents because so many of them work on the beach, and they need the help, just like Dare County residents.
Mr. Chairman? I know from the years that we've had the food pantry, and Walter's there, and I'm on the Social Services Board with Kathy, that whenever, whenever there's a problem, the first name that comes to mind is ICO. And I know that the people, that you can call ICO, and they pretty much drop what they're doing. And I've seen some cases of no heat, no electricity. Food, the food pantries can handle, but no water, no heat, no utility bills, whatever, ICO always steps up to the plate, always. Never, never said maybe or whatever. So I commend you and Walter and everything that you guys do. And let us what we can do, let us know what we can do at the county level.
Well, thank you very much, because it's all volunteer-based. So all of the volunteers that are there, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Wednesday at Currituck, they're interviewing the clients, the lead volunteers making the decision, yea or nay, or if it's too complicated, then they will call. I come to Currituck every Wednesday, and on the beach, we have the part-time person, she would make those decisions. But I mean, we had somebody come in from Currituck County today that literally took two hours just of referrals. So I know that's a lot of time that they would be going to Dare County or Currituck County Social Services to try and fix the problem when there's sometimes the multitude of agencies that need to be involved that you have to contact is very time-consuming. So wonderful volunteers, got four of them sitting right here right now, and I appreciate everything that they do.
Let me ask you another question. One of the things in your presentation was, I don't want to say repeat, I don't know the right words, but people that
Yes.
Continue to, is there, is there any help they get to help them not keep making bad decisions, the people that repeatedly make
Yes.
Bad decisions? Do we help them?
Right now, I just applied for a grant through our community foundation, both counties, for budget counseling. We are not here to enable anybody. If somebody comes in and they're a repeat client, they have got to show me what changed. Did your husband fall off a ladder and break his leg? Did your child get sick? Because if nothing has changed, and you are in the same situation, no job, or the same job, you didn't take our advice of getting another job, then unfortunately, we have to deny them, even if it is a mother with children, and their power's going to be shut off. Because we would not be a good steward of donated funds if we continue to put money into those situations. So we try our hardest to find jobs for them through, we just had a volunteer retreat at Holy Redeemer Catholic Church, because it's a big church to hold it. It was for both counties, 21 different vendors from Employment Security Commission, Coastal Staffing, Walmart, cancer support groups. So we all put our minds together and say, you know, if there's a job out there, we're going to find you a job. And if it's, we try our hardest in all avenues. So we don't want the repeat clients. We want them to be self-sufficient.
Right.
But you're going to get this, you're going to get a small percentage of repeat ones. And when they come in, then we really have to look at it closely and determine what has changed, because if nothing has changed, then we need to save that money for another family that really needs the help.
Can I ask a question? I know you said like on the repeat clientele, I mean, do y'all get a lot of like the single mothers, the fathers not paying child support? I mean, do y'all typically deny?
We do.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, do y'all typically have to deny those guys sometimes? Because I know with my law enforcement background, the court can only do but so much on enforcing somebody to, you know, to pay their child support, and when they threaten to put them in jail, then they magically get funds, but it happens all the time. But I mean, do y'all have that a lot?
We do. If somebody comes in and they show, single mom, children, and then we look down their, we, our application is extremely thorough, so we do budget, like the whole entire budget will be on each side, so your expenses to your income. And right away, that's a trigger. If your expenses are too much than your income, then you're going to be in that same situation every single month, so any help I give you is not really help. If somebody comes in and they have children and they don't have any child support, we direct them to legal aid and depending on what county they are, to go there and to try and get, they, child support for their children. But we won't deny them. Pretty much, somebody that does not have a job, we tell them that we can help you. I can't help you right now. You have to go and get a job. You have to do these things before we can help you.
Where I was going, I'm just, I've seen the papers before where the arrears are 13,000, 30,000.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not something that, in my opinion, is very enforced very well.
No.
Not on your end, I'm just saying on the Child Support Enforcement Agency.
Mm-hmm. I agree with that. Sort of, some of the ladies just don't know where to turn to to get the child support.
There's not, there's not a lot of help out there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we thank you very much. It was a very informative presentation, and I know that some of the folks at home are going to see this presentation and step up a little bit.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
New business, Mr. Manager, fiscal year 2014 budget presentation, and the board will set a date for the public hearing.
By general statutes, the county manager's named the budget officer, and it's my responsibility to prepare a balanced budget and submit it to the Board of Commissioners. At that time, I turn it over to you. It's for your consideration to handle it as you will. And as you mentioned, set a public hearing for hopefully future adoption. So this time, I'd like to present to you the proposed 2013, 2014 operating budget for Currituck County. Unlike our federal counterparts, by statute, you are required to prepare a balanced budget. Here's a statute telling you that you shall. Preparing the budget is one of the most important things that the Board of Commissioners do. It sets your fiscal direction and fiscal policy for the upcoming year. And although we like to talk about the budget, the county actually has over 29 individual budgets that taken together actually equal the county's budget. Want to jump right into the general fund, which is the mainstay of county operations. This is what handles our day-to-day operations. And of course, the biggest thing that is getting the most press, and is probably the biggest thing that affects the budget, is we're in the middle of going through a revaluation. I want to walk through this, this part of the presentation with you. I know this is a very simple mathematic formula, but it's key to understanding the revaluation process. Your assessed value times your tax rate equals the amount you pay, whether that's at your individual household, or whether it's the county as a whole. And we're going through evaluation. I'll talk about the assessed valuation first. Counties are required by statute, at least every eight years, we have to reappraise all the property in the county, which is what we have been going through. The taxes administrator was here about a month ago, and he told you the process at this point in time. We've lost about a third of the valuation of the county over the last eight years going into this budget year. This kind of graphic that shows you over time, you can see in 2005, when we did our last reappraisal, you can see the significant increase, and now you're seeing a decrease of a third of the valuation. Want to start the slide. In the 2005, when you saw on the graphic the drastic increase, I just kind of want to look at to the right-hand side of this graphic. You could see that in lower Currituck, in areas of lower Currituck, and certainly the Outer Banks, we saw land valuations doubling and tripling. I think those properties are probably the areas that are most susceptible to wide swings in valuation. And eight years ago, it was increases. At that time, the county, I think we quadrupled the valuation of the county. We were able to decrease the property tax from 62 cent down to 32 cent. It's telltale because now we're going through evaluation. Everybody knows the recession that we've gone through and the economic struggles of the last several years. Those same three areas are seeing the volatile nature of their evaluation. So I think it's, again, it shows the speculative nature of some of the properties in the Outer Banks. As a county, you can see the first column is the pre-evaluation, the second column is post-evaluation, and a couple of things are going on here. Before we were evaluated, you could see that two-thirds of the valuation of Currituck County was held on the Outer Banks. What you're seeing now, after the revow, a drastic shift of valuation from the Outer Banks to the mainland, to the point where the Outer Banks now carries just a little over half of the valuation of the county. But the second thing is, if you looked at the bottom part of this, that valuation isn't equally distributed on the mainland. The northern part of the county, from say the Coin Jack Bridge north, is seeing more of the increase in that valuation than say the south end. That's important, because in a few minutes, I'm going to show you the impact of the tax rate, and you're going to see this trend show up in actual tax assessments. Graphically showing you how the county breaks down in valuation. So that's the valuation side. Now we'll go over to the tax rate side. Although the general statutes puts some cap on how high the Board of Commissioners can raise property taxes, you are free at your discretion to raise and place that tax anywhere from zero to that cap. The general statutes do require, though, in years of revaluation, you have to disclose what is called the revenue-neutral rate, and I'll walk that through. You don't have to set it at revenue-neutral, you just have to disclose what that rate is. And this is the intent of the revenue-neutral rate. This is this year. Before revaluation, the county was a little over $8 billion. We have a 32 cent tax rate, and it generates $26 million, almost 26, 26.7 million dollars. If we were not going into revaluation, and we were looking at, the 2012 assessed value is based on January 1st of 2012. If we were going into this budget year, and it was not a revaluation, there is an assumption that during the course of 2012, people would have built new homes, remodeled, repaired, added value to the county. And the statutes lets us go in and say, over the last eight years, we've averaged X amount of growth, and we can apply that growth. In this case, it's a little over 1%. So in eight years, on average, the county was growing at 1%. So 1% growth would get us to $8.4 billion. At the tax rate would raise $27.1 million. So the question becomes, and this is the revenue-neutral piece, we did go through revaluation, we saw a significant drop in valuation, so what is the tax rate that would have to be applied against our new value that would generate roughly $27.1 million? And that rate is what they call the revenue-neutral rate. But before I show you that, I'm going to show you this. This is a common question that comes up. Why do we change the rate at all? What if we took the new valuation and left the tax rate at 32 cent? We would generate a little under $18 million. That's a $9 million decrease in the amount of money that we collect right now to run county government. And you'll see later in the presentation, 9 million is about what we fund a Board of Education with. So although the Board could consider something like this, it would be a drastic impact on operation. You would end up cutting anywhere from a fifth to a quarter of the total services that the county is providing would have to be completely cut out of the budget. So we go back to then, what is that rate that we need to assess to generate to keep us revenue-neutral? And that rate has been calculated at 48 and 1/2 cent. So at 48 and 1/2 cent, we're going to generate 27.2 million, approximately the same amount of money that would have been generated if we had not gone through revaluation. So does that mean everybody's taxes just went up? Not necessarily. It depends on where you live. 64% of the folks' tax bills we sent out last year will actually see an increase of some magnitude in their tax bill. 36% will actually see a decrease in their tax bill. There's a lot going on in this slide. This is showing of the 30, of the 64 people percent that's seeing increases, 59 will see, 59% will see an increase of more than 5%, and 55% of the 64 will see an increase greater than 10%. You also see that 9% will see a plus or minus, a nominal increase compared to 18% that we'll see a nominal somewhere in the 10% increase. There's a lot going on in the next couple of slides, so I just want to kind of bring you to the very last column, the right-hand column. When the tax administrator was here, he showed you by regions, his selective amount of, he picked houses and he picked lots. In the first column, he was showing you the previous valuation. The second column was the revalued property valuation. What I've added to those exact same example was what the previous tax is What I've added to those exact same example was what the previous tax is and what the current tax would be. The last column shows you the difference. So really, when I show you these slides, all you really need to do is focus on that very last column. And what it's going to do is you're going to see the same pattern I just showed you in the valuation shift, you're going to see where the value, where the tax liability shift is going. This is the northern Outer Banks, and as you can see, um, the vast majority, if not all of the houses and lots, are actually seeing a tax decrease. The southern Outer Banks, the Corolla area, almost all of the property, if not all of the property, homes, is seeing a decrease in tax liability. Same thing with lots. You're seeing this, this shift of tax liability from the Outer Banks to the mainland. Lower Currituck, on houses, you're seeing a mix of modest increases and decreases. Looking at this, it appears to me that subdivisions that would have come together in the last, say, four, five, six years, that would have come to, to record, uh, at the, at, during the peak of when real estate was really booming, those areas seem to have been the ones that are seeing the decreased valuation and reappraisal. Those are the ones seeing the decrease. Waterside Villages, Kimarla Club, Carolina Club, those areas are actually seeing a decrease in their tax liability, where the more older established residents or, or communities are actually seeing increases. On lots, you're seeing a mixture also. In Lower Currituck, some decreases, some increases. As you move north of the Coin Jock Canal, you're basically seeing increases. And as you're seeing now, the tax liability being shifted from Outer Banks to mainland, but it's not equally on the mainland, is being shifted to the north end. So north end, your homes in Crawford, lots in Crawford, uh, generally modest, this example is, is modest increases. Then when you get to Moyoc, you're seeing almost pure tax increases in homes and in lots. And you're seeing something very similar in Knott's Island. So where does this put us? This chart is showing, this, this is just a random sample of the communities around us. Dare County is going through the exact same revaluation process we are right now. They're seeing the same kind of drastic property shift in the resort areas. Um, they are telling us right now, and again, they're in our process, they have not adopted their budget, uh, but they're rolling out a, a, a proposed tax increase going from twenty-six cents to forty-three cent. So at forty-three, they'll still be the lowest in the region. Uh, but forty-eight and a half, you see, we come in third. And you can see compared to some of our, other counties that are not going through revaluation, uh, we still are holding as, as one of the lower tax rates in the community.
Mr. Scanlon. Okay, you're talking about Dare County being the lowest in the region. However, most everything else in Dare County is incorporated, so they pay
That's correct.
City tax as well.
Yeah, the, the only folks that actually would see the forty-three cent tax rate in Dare County is the ones that do not live in a corporate area. As you see on the chart, there's Nags Head and Killover Hills. Uh, you can see that actually, when you look at their county rate plus the municipal rate, it certainly puts them significantly, or not significantly, but certainly puts them over, uh, the forty-eight and a half cent rate is. So even though it, it is an increase, um, and, and it certainly has a, you know, an impact on individuals, uh, we still are looking at it as being one of the, the lower taxed in, in the region. So that's the revaluation process. So that sets us up looking at the budget as a whole. The general fund budget, we're looking at a one point four percent increase in the budget over last year, just a modest increase. We're not proposing any cost of living adjustment for county employees. And other than oxytax funding, uh, some, the, the enhanced paramedic coverage that we're doing in Crowa, we're going to put a one-man team into Crowa. Oxytax will fund that. So other than that oxytax funding, we're not talking about adding any other employees or any adjustments in personnel, uh, that is taxpayer-supported. Uh, in previous meetings, we have talked about the unfunded state mandate of having to maintain unemployment insurance. Uh, we had to incorporate that in the budget. Uh, and we've also incorporated in, uh, building a shooting range for the Sheriff's Department. Uh, with the, the, the work that was going on at, at Maple Park, we actually displaced her range, and we're talking now about in the budget about replacing that. The budget is, it, it's a one point four percent increase. It's proposed at forty-seven point four nine million dollars. Our budget is funded by property tax. It is still the, the, the largest funding of our operations. A little over half of our operations is funded by property tax. Other taxes, sales taxes, um, will make up eleven percent. These are the top five revenue options, uh, revenue sources we have. Those top five right there represents eighty-two percent of the money that's collected to fund our operations. Want to show this slide, uh, in the example, we were talking about revaluation, I showed you the twenty-seven point two figure. Um, the general statute do not let us calculate our, our budget, the entire one hundred percent of a tax assessment, uh, although our, our goal is to collect it. We only can actually budget the percentage of collection we have in previous years. So when you look at our budget, you're going to see a twenty-six million dollar, uh, property tax, because our, at our ninety-eight point four-three percent collection rate, we only can promote or project that percentage of our collection. Ninety-eight point four-three actually is very good. Want to show the slide, we're proposing a forty-eight point five percent. Purpose of this slide is to show that we have, for all intent purposes, been very stable with our tax rate. Uh, the Board of Commissioners historically have not been a board that has, has raised rates. Um, and you have to go all the way back to our last revaluation to see the last impact on, on tax rates.
Mr. Scanlon, what was the tax rate previous to two thousand and five?
Uh, the, before the revaluation, the, the general property tax was sixty-two cents. So it went, uh, it dropped from sixty-two down to thirty-two.
Well, in essence, what went up the last time in value looks like
Yes.
Probably come down this time.
Long-term, what you're looking at is, um, we're not dropping, I mean, we're not dropping all, all the way back that we did. Uh, operationally, you can see, this is how the, our budget spends out on the expense side. Want to point out that if you look at education and public safety, one of the two main things that county government does, uh, that's about a little over sixty percent of our operating budget is tied up in just those two depart, or those two service areas. We are a service industry. Um, forty-three percent of our total budget is in our personnel. The largest, five largest departments that we fund, education coming in by far is the largest thing that we do, followed by EMS, the Sheriff's Office, social services, and the jail. Uh, these five departments here represent about, uh, I think it's about fifty-five, fifty-six percent of our total cost of operation is within these five departments right here.
Mr. Scanlon, if I add all those together, what is the number?
Then there's, there's one piece that's left out, and that's
Twenty-eight.
The funding that goes through the fire department, so that's close to, that's well over a million.
Point I'm making is, is the property taxes don't equal the amount that's actually spent on the
Correct.
Exactly.
Correct. If you went in and if, if you go back and think, if, if we did not, if we left the rate exactly where it was, and we're nine million dollars short in operation, you would be looking at the, the, these, one of these five departments would have to take a pretty significant hit in order to maintain that. It, it'd be a drastic change in the level of service that the county would be providing. It, I mean, it equals the entire amount that we fund the Board of Education. The largest increase from last year to this year, these five departments are showing those increases. EMS, as I mentioned, we're putting, uh, manpower up in Crowa. Um, that and equipment is driving EMS. The Sheriff's Department, we're building a shooting range, that's what's driving her increase. The Rural Center, we are, there's funding, we're carrying forward and adding funding to build a heritage museum at the Rural Center. COA, this is, I've, I've heard some public comment about that. The, the arrangement with COA is with the new building, the county is responsible for maintaining the building itself, mowing the grass, janitorial services, keeping it clean. COA is responsible for the instructional, the people, the operations of the building. So we've had, we've increased it, we have historically provided seventy-five thousand dollars of funding to support COA. We're increasing that only a hundred and fifteen thousand to cover the operations of the building. So the entire building is costing us less than two hundred thousand dollars a year to have that facility in Currituck County.
Does the money go into Rural Center? Does that come out of the
It's, it's coming, the, the, it's coming out of oxytax.
So that has no effect?
Has no
Because I've had someone
No, no effect on the tax rate.
About that.
Yeah, there, there is no property taxes that goes into the operation of the Rural Center. It's all oxytax-funded.
As, as is the EMS service in Crowa.
EMS, yeah, the EMS service in Crowa. The additional personnel will be funded out of oxytax.
And Whalehead Trust are, is a
Whalehead Trust is funded out of oxytax.
Okay.
This shows you how our folks are broken down. I know it's a small, uh, thing. Uh, the, the red area, the red bar is public safety. It's by far the largest, um, area that we have employees. Uh, we're increasing our employment for people. This is full-time equivalent. Uh, so next year's budget will have three hundred and seventy full-time equivalent slots with Currituck County. Looking at graphically, you can see fifty-two percent of our personnel is in public safety.
Mr. Scan, I want to ask a question. You touched, and you, we're, we're talking about employment here. Can you briefly touch on the, I think it was an unfunded mandate for unemployment insurance that the federal government passed along to the state and the state passed
Yes, sir.
Along to us? And with the amount, please.
Historically, county governments did not, or participate in the statewide unemployment program like businesses do. Businesses, once a quarter, have to pay, a percentage of their payroll has to go into a state fund. Local governments were not in that program. Local governments are responsible for paying one hundred percent of the cost of any claims from our employees that are qualified to get unemployment compensation. Over the la, when the economy went bust over the last several years, the state of North Carolina borrowed billions of dollars from the federal government, and now they have to pay that back. And so the state is struggling to determine where they're going to get the funds to pay back this loan they got from the federal government. So what they came up with, one of several things they came up with, is local governments now have to participate in the same way that corporations participate in the state of North Carolina. So we now have to start paying a percentage of our salary and our payroll into a statewide fund, uh, which in and of itself isn't the bad thing, but we still are responsible for a hundred percent of our claims against us. So we're getting hit in the first year on having to pay a hundred percent like we have, plus having to pay into the fund. Uh, and it's about an eighty-plus thousand dollar increase of operations that we had to fund into our budget because of that single change there. Over the last five years, uh, to mention during the budget process, hiring employees is probably the most expensive thing that local government can do. Uh, so we've been very judicious about how we've been doing that. Uh, in the last five years, we've only added eight and a half people, including, this includes the four that we're talking about tonight. And again, in this budget, we're talking about hiring four new people, uh, and there will be, it's, it's the EMS department, and it'll be putting a, a team up into the Crowa area to expand paramedic-level services up into the forward-drive area. Schools, the biggest things that we fund. Uh, we have a funding formula that we've had in place for quite some time that seems to be working well. Uh, as you can see, this is just showing you the last several years. It is a modest decrease in the amount, the gross amount that we're actually funding under the expense funding. But if you look under the ADM, the school system for several years now is actually losing students. So even though it's a slight gross decrease, it's actually an increase in the amount we're funding per student. What I covered there was just the general operations. The, I mentioned we had twenty-nine, uh, other budgets. This is just starting to fold those budgets in to start building to what the total cost of operating county government. The next is moving into operating budget, and the operating budget for next year is a little over, a little under sixty-seven million dollars. And these items added to the general fund is what makes up the operating budget.
Mr. Scanlon, back to the, the one thing, I mean, we talked about hiring four new people in the Crowa area. I think it's important for everyone to also realize that we're not taking a full hit for four new people in Crowa. We, we are reallocating some resources that generally have been there during the daytime to people during the day, and also at nighttime, going to Corolla for five months out of the year. Those resources will be reallocated, so we're not taking a full hit for
Correct.
The total cost.
Correct.
I, I think that's important for people to know.
These are the, the additional funds that go into making our operating budget. There's only a couple of things in here that, um, are, are changes from where, the way we're operating this year, and they all basically are in the enterprise funds, our enterprise funds being our water and sewer funds. For the Newtown Road Sewer Fund, uh, right now, they are billed a flat rate per month, uh, and we're proposing to change that over to a volumetric rate, so they'll, they'll pay, uh, one-to-one to the water, whatever the water bill would be, what the sewer bill is. Uh, the flat rate is approximately what this is, what the, what the rate would be. So this really is not looking at an increase, uh, in what their monthly bill is, it's just a methodology of how we're calculating that. The Moyoc Commons Sewer District, that's around the food line up in Moyoc, uh, they have a district tax, and we're proposing to decrease that tax from twenty cent down to ten cent. Uh, there are also, we were proposing to decrease their wastewater rate. Right now, they pay three and a half times their water. We're proposing to decrease that down to just three times their water. So that's actually a decrease from Moyoc Commons. The next one is Ocean Sands. The Board of Commissioners have appointed an advisory board. Uh, that advisory board has met, and this is actually a proposal coming from the advisory board. Uh, they took this proposal to their general body about two weeks ago at their, uh, General Property Owners Association meeting. They have, that wastewater plant has reached its useful life, um, and they are proposing, or they're requesting that the Board of Commissioners do two things. Number one, that you increase their water rates, or the wastewater rates, from one-and-one to water, to one and a half times water, and that we rinse, reinstitute a five-cent district tax on them to generate the funds necessary to do the make, the repair, the upgrade and the replacement of their wastewater plant. And again, this is coming from the community's recommendation. If someone asks what the total net county budget is next year, we're proposing sixty-seven million dollars to operate county government. The, what we add in there is the capital funds projects to, to get to that number. We're proposing three projects next year, capital projects, um, although we, we have several that are already in the works that we completed, so you'll see more than is ongoing. But, uh, the three projects is the animal shelter. Uh, we are built, we're looking to build another public beach access site, a, a parking bathroom in the, in the, around the Corolla Light Area, um, and to, uh, finish the design and start building the heritage museum at the Rural Center. The one I want to focus on is the animal shelter. That seems to have, uh, get as much play. There's two things driving the, uh, the need behind this facility. Uh, the first one is actually the expansion of the airport. Uh, currently, the airport, if you look at the, the, the graphic on the, on screen, you see the dark red area. That right now is Airport Road. Uh, we do not have a parallel taxiway on the southern end of the runway. In order to be able to put a, a parallel taxiway, we've got to relocate all the facilities that's currently on Airport Road. Uh, we've been working with the Division of Aviation for several years. If, this is a project, a high priority project, supported by the Division of Aviation. This is ninety-ten fund money that we get from the state. Uh, the state is willing to bring to the table two and a half million dollars of state money to Currituck County to help us grow our airport. Uh, what we have to do is move the facilities out of the way. So one of the things driving this project, in order to get access to two and a half million dollars of state funding, is to relocate the animal shelter. This is showing the, the proximity of the current shelter, if you're not, if you're not familiar, uh, with the runway, it's literally right there on the road. And it's also where, it shows you the proposed location, relocation of the, uh, animal shelter at, uh, Maple Park. Want to zoom in to show you the location of the animal shelter. There's actually several facilities, I'm going to touch this in a second. Uh, there's actually several buildings out there. What, the, the project we're talking about isn't just the shelter. Uh, there's the main building, they have some outbuildings, and then behind that is where the animal patrol offices are and their quarantine shelter. We're talking about that whole complex as the capital of a project. And I'll, I'll touch that again. The other reason to replace this, I'm just going to go, go through really fast and show you some pictures if you've not had the, uh, the opportunity to be at the shelter or to see the shelter. Um, I don't recall exactly when it was built, it's been there longer than, than I have been here, uh, but you can see, sometimes a, a picture says, uh, says it all. but you can see sometimes a picture says it all. But this is our current shelter. No doubt that it is, as a facility, it has reached its useful life and it's in need to be replaced. So the question comes up, if you replace it, how do we come up with the size of the shelter? This is, this graphic is showing you all the different facilities that's in that compound that we're looking to replace into a single building. What we're talking about is taking the area that is, everybody looks at or thinks of as a shelter and doubling that area, but we're not increasing at all the animal control area or the quarantine area. So if you look at the graphic, this is where the 10,000-square-foot number came from. The other number that seems to get a lot of play is the cost of the project. One of the show this graphic is, the entire project is being budgeted, is projected at $2.5 million. It is out right now, we're doing a design-build. Tomorrow, we're actually going to start receiving back in the proposals. Once we have proposals, we'll be able to start locking numbers down. This is our best estimate of what we feel like a 10,000-square-foot building will cost. The project will be less than this, or this number, it will not be higher than this number. But again, this is a budget figure. The building itself is only 1.6 million of the total number. You can see the other pieces that go in it, there's site work, there's utilities, the engineering fees, equipping the building, so there's other costs that go into the cost of building this facility. So the budget is being projected at 2.5, but the building itself is 1.6. And again, tomorrow, we'll be starting opening up the designs of that, and we'll be able to further refine these numbers. That is the budget presenting to you in a snapshot, presented to you tonight. We'd like for the board to set a public hearing for your next meeting, June 3rd. It is at your discretion if you want to approve it to June 3rd. You could delay that to your second meeting in June, it's your prerogative. The only thing you have to do is have it adopted by July 1st. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, but now we're asking if the board will support setting a public hearing for the June 3rd date.
Do you want to have any questions? Mr. Scanlon?
I have a question. On the communications thing, is that going to the, there was the increase, that was like $69,000. Is that for the new 800 megahertz? Is that where that?
It's equipment we have to put in the communications center in support of the 800.
Support of that, yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
I also like to mention that we will have the entire budget, all the way down into the line item amounts, will be available at, there'll be two hard copies that will be available in my office. The rest of it will be available on the county website. It's our goal to have that whole document on the website by tomorrow, Wednesday morning, at the latest, so the general public can go and see. The full document and the full detail will be publicly available.
Will we be putting them like in the library and stuff like that?
Well, they can go online and see it. We haven't, I mean, we can, but we haven't been putting the hard copies of them. We used to, until we started putting in our website, and we've let that suffice.
I'd like to have a copy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Personally, would you like to have a copy?
Yes, to put it at the root, at the community department, that's all.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I have said on many occasions that I would not support a tax increase without doing our due diligence, and I think that the board has brought quite a few items of concern in this budget and throughout the year, especially on my tenure on the board. And with it being a revenue-neutral, like I said, without doing our due diligence, I could not support a tax increase. But I think we're working towards that, and Dan and our finance folks have done a tremendous job of presenting us a budget that we can work with. And again, it's going to, the tax increase will affect the majority of my constituents in my district, but again, like I said, without doing our due diligence and hard work to come up with a revenue-neutral budget, it's been a challenge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we'd be remiss if we did not mention that in this whole budget process, it started sometime back, what, Mr. Scanlon, you and Sandra started on this when?
We generally start around January.
Okay. So from January until this point in time, the budget requests, they come to Mr. Scanlon through his various departments, various entities, there has been, what was the figure that had been cut out of the budget?
When all the requests came in, and before we had a chance really to do anything with it, we were $7.5 million in the hole.
So in essence, you cut, the process cut $7 million out of the budget process?
Out of the request, yes, sir.
I just, I think that's important. I mean, it's not like we're sitting up here trying to figure out how to spend money. We're trying, we're all taxpayers as well, and we're trying to be as judicious as we possibly can when we look at these things. And they're tough decisions, and like Ms. Gilbert said, you know, it's going to impact some people on a positive note, and it's going to impact some people on a negative note. No different than what it done in 2005. The same exact thing happened. There were some people whose taxes went down, some people whose taxes went up. It's the process. I wish we could control the economy, I wish we could control how the country is running, but us up here in our little world in Currituck County, I wish we could, but we can't, so.
Well, I think, I think it's important that even with the revaluation and the rate being set at the 48.5, it's still one of the lowest rates in the surrounding area. I looked at Virginia Beach, 93 cent. I looked at Norfolk, was it $1.15? One of Chesapeake, $1.5. Derrick County, if you take in the municipalities, it's 60 and 70 cent, and the ones that haven't done revaluation, when they do it next year, theirs are going to go up as well. But this is, another thing is, this is driven by state statute from the, is it the Machinery Act from 1931 or '32? And every eight years, it requires every county, municipality, and the state to do a revaluation. So the law requires it, but the climate of the economy controls it, and that's the way it is. And, you know, when the board back in, I guess in the 90s, when they set it at 64 cent, I don't know what it was before that, but I'm sure they did some sweating as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to note that we're talking about tax increases and taxes going down. I think it's important to know that, I don't think there's any winners in this process. For the people that their taxes went down, I can tell you firsthand, I know a person that lost $1 million in value of their home, and it was primarily equity in their home. With the reevaluation, it's gone. So I would imagine that that person would love to have a tax increase and recoup $1 million in equity. So I don't think there's any winners and losers here, or taxes going up, taxes going down. I know, and I brought it up earlier, Mr. Scanlon was handed, you know, an unfunded mandate from the federal government to the state government, and I think it's important that Sandra Hill is notified, or recognized for being a part of this process. I saw her back there a while ago, and she was yawning, so I imagine this has been a long, drawn-out deal. So thank you, Sandra, but let me say this. I can say firsthand, I know a lot of people that lost equity in their homes with their reevaluation, that they can never recoup, not in their lifetime. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow that up, if there is somebody out there that's still, I mean, the revaluation process is not finished. If there's any individuals that still has concerns or questioned about their evaluation, they still have an opportunity to contact Tracy Sample, the tax administrator. He is the first line of review. From that, it will come to the Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Equalization Review. He's telling me he thinks you will be sitting sometime in July. So folks that still have a concern about their evaluation still have an opportunity and a process they can go through to present that. So the valuation number is not completely locked down, it looks like it would be midsummer before it actually is, but the people do have still recourse.
One last comment that I wanted to make is, with the budget being our largest responsibility as the government, is the departments that have presented their budgets to our budget officers, they're going to have to work within their means, and, you know, it was a challenge for us to make these decisions, but again, it's appreciated, and, you know, we hate that, you know, we're having to roll this down to those departments and have them work within their means, but this is, you know, in personal lives, we need to be doing the same thing. So, you know, I appreciate those departments that are going to have to be forced with the challenges that we've been faced with.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just would like to say, I mean, I've lived here, pretty much my whole life, I'm 39-years-old. We live in a safe community, parks and rec, all the stuff that, with the level of services that the citizens get in Currituck County, you know, I mean, it's better than living in Chesapeake, no offense to Chesapeake, but, you know, it's, I mean, for what you're paying for, you're getting a lot, so. I'm not saying that for votes or anything like that for future term, I mean, it's just, you know, it's business, the cost of business is not, is not cheap sometimes.
I'd like to say one thing.
Okay.
Everyone here's got to have a save, since all of us have been involved in the process. The collection rate of taxes in Currituck County is 98%. If our taxes were outlandish, that number would be a whole lot different. And so it is something that we have always tried to do, and remember, we're taxpayers too, and so it hits all of us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Griggs?
Just as a point of clarification, because I keep hearing increasing taxes. From your presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong, have taxes gone up on the people in Currituck, or is it the rate? The rate of taxes have gone up, but the actual amount of money we spend is revenue-neutral.
The taxes for the county, taking it as a whole, is revenue-neutral and has not increased.
And I think-
Individually, the impact is different depending on geographically we live, but for the county as a whole, the rate has not increased.
And I think that's the point that needs to be made clear. The amount of taxes that we are collecting for the upcoming year hasn't increased. The rates will change, some will go up and some will go down, but we haven't increased the amount of taxes that we are taxing the people in total. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we need a motion to have a public hearing on June 3rd and possible adoption of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget for Currituck County.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of ordinance, amending Section 10-96 and Section 10-143 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to permit certain commercial activity at the Whalehead Club at Heritage Park and other county park properties. Mr. McCrea?
I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. With the expression and desire to provide perhaps additional recreational opportunity at county facilities, and particularly the Whalehead Heritage Park facility and the Rural Center, and also the possibility of perhaps raising revenue, again, particularly from the Whalehead Trust and the Rural Center, it was requested to provide the board for your consideration amendments to existing ordinances that would allow for certain commercial activity to occur in county parks. The first proposed amendment at line 15 of the draft ordinance is actually the section that relates to the Whalehead Boat Basin, a rather archaic, I guess, ordinance from 1990 that was adopted at the time that the county received an easement from the developers of 111 West, that was proposed as a subdivision on the Whalehead tract. And so the county adopted an ordinance at the time in order to regulate the easement area, which is all the county and the citizens had a right to at one point, and the boat ramp and boat basin dock area that the county had a right to utilize through that easement. That may be an ordinance we need to revisit and probably either repeal or significantly amend, given the fact that the county now owns, of course, the entirety of the property. In any event, there is no ability within that particular area, the Whalehead Trust or Heritage Park, to conduct any commercial activity. So the amendment to Section 10-96 would mirror what is already allowed to some extent in county parks elsewhere, and expand that somewhat, as will be proposed, and I'll speak about in just a moment, to make it unlawful to engage in business or commercial activity at Whalehead Trust and the boat basin and boat ramp area in particular, except when part of a county-sponsored activity or event specifically authorized by the county manager, that's current language for other county parks. And then we propose adding, or licensee operating and managing the facility, thus to recognize a Whalehead Trust, which now, of course, has a license to operate and manage that property, pursuant to a concession license agreement with the county or licensee operating and managing the facility. The idea of allowing for a concession license agreement with the county or with a licensee, in that case, the Whalehead Trust on the Whalehead Heritage Park property, is again to recognize and allow for that group and organization to negotiate with vendors for the provision of activities at whatever fee and what other terms and conditions they can come to an agreement with, to enhance the opportunities at that particular facility. Moving on to line 23, Section 10-143 comes from our current parks ordinance that prohibits commercial activity in county parks as a whole, except as indicated in subsection B. And so if you go down to line 27 of the proposed draft, that's where the proposed amendment would occur, which is underlying language to allow, similar as in the previous proposed amendment, that the prohibition on commercial activity in county parks would not apply to county-sponsored activities or other events specifically authorized by the county manager, that's current language in the ordinance, and will add, or commercial activity conducted pursuant to a concession license agreement with the county. That, again, would allow for the county to be able to negotiate with vendors or persons who might be interested in providing activities or services that might enhance the experience in our parks. It could mean the negotiation of fees, it doesn't necessarily have to mean a fee is paid by the concessionaire, but it does allow for the county and provide for the county to enter into negotiations with vendors or concessionaires to come to an arrangement that is agreeable with the county to enhance the opportunity within our parks. That is the proposed ordinance, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have one. I don't have a problem with this at all. I do have just a question, just for clarification. How would this play into, if someone come forward and wanted to do something like this, say, at the Lower Currituck Park and Boat Ramp down there? From a consistent standpoint, how would that?
I don't think, I don't think it's precedent-setting, I don't think the county is necessarily required to decide that every park is suitable for a certain type of concession. I think that's certainly within the discretion of the Board of Commissioners to make a determination. You had full authority to regulate county property. That being said, I think we certainly want to utilize a similar process in whatever, whenever we were reviewing proposals or requests by concessionaires to work off of our facilities. But I think one of the key things that we've taken into consideration, again, is how does this enhance the recreational opportunity for county citizens and tourists? And how might a concession agreement help enhance the revenue produced through that activity at the park in order to support the park's operation and maybe further development of parks within the county? So I think that's the type of thing we would take into consideration.
Again, my point and my question is not about the process, it's about being consistent across the board. You know, if it's good for one, it's good for well.
But of course, not every-
And you answered the question about being consistent with this. Okay, that's all I needed, wanted to hear.
Me, as I look at it, I would say, of course, with the Whalehead Trust, we have tasked them with-
No problem with that.
Enhancing revenue, but when you get to the mainland parks, I guess the way I've looked at it is, with the Rural Center, we have the kayak trails and everything, and-
They're manned, you've got people there.
Yeah, yeah. And I would see where it may not be appropriate at maybe the South End Park to have kayak rentals or whatever there unless there's some kind of way that it's supervised and it's done appropriately.
That was my point.
But certainly with the Rural Center, I mean, somebody could take their family down there, rent kayaks or whatever, and go out and kayak, and then come back in, or same with Whalehead Trust, because they are targeted to that. So that was a good question, and I'm not sure I-
Well, I'll just look at it from down the road, I mean, you know, it's, okay, here we go, we'll make the rules as we go along, I don't like to do that, I'd rather, let's do it and be consistent.
Well, and to add that, I personally have had a situation come up with Sound Park, where some concessionaires wanted to be on that property, and our Parks and Recreation does an excellent job as far as weighing out those permits and the permissions that come through to comply with our ordinances. So as far as the other parks, it's enforced, so being consistent, like you said, Vance, is very, very important that we apply across the board.
This does not require a public hearing. As an ordinance, it requires a unanimous vote the first time.
That's correct.
And if it does not receive a unanimous vote, it would be scheduled at our next meeting for a vote, and then a majority would carry.
That's correct.
So does anyone have any further questions? Mr. McCrea? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion from the board.
So moved.
Have a motion.
I second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Board appointments, appointment of senior citizen, I think that is you, Mr. Petry.
Want to renominate Ms. Wright? Is that, is that-
Yeah, Rose Wright. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Next is Commissioner's report. Mr. McCord, we'll let you go first, if you have anything to report.
Just like we were spoken earlier about the taxes and stuff, you know, nobody likes paying taxes, nobody likes spending more on taxes. Like I said before, we live in a good community, a safe community, good schools, you know, I'm proud of where I live, and I don't mind, you know, having to pay, you know, and it's, like I said, it's not fun, I have to pay a little bit more, but, you know, it is what it is.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griggs?
Nothing for tonight.
Mr. Martin?
The only thing I'd like to say, had a person from Lower Currituck called, and they were trying to get rid of their television, the gentleman didn't like you out of heaven, driving all the way to Barco or someplace to drop it off, and I would just like the county manager to look into the possibility of providing that type of service in lower-
that type of service in Lower Currituck, so people don't have to drive to Barco in order to get rid of the TV or something like that.
Yeah, I said something to Mr. Scanlon about that as well.
Also in Moyoc as well, it's, like I said, Barco is the only place that takes them.
That's correct. And if we don't accept them in the regular bins, then I'm assuming that we don't accept them in the regular bin?
We do not.
Well, I can tell you where they're gonna wind up. They're gonna wind up on the side of the road.
Thank you.
In ditches if we don't look at having at least one receptacle at the lower end and one in Moyoc. So, anything else?
Nothing.
Good, good point, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Idlet?
Yeah, I, I got the same call, Mr. Martin, and certainly, I feel like, again, consistency, we, if, we need a pick-up place for people to be able to put their, their quote-unquote hazardous stuff, that, I guess television's fallen on that now, so, but, yeah, I would ask that we do something there as well. Just to let you all know, we approved a request, a budget request or amendment, not request, but a budget amendment for Knights Island Fire Department tonight. As you all know, they've had some staffing issues that we diligently have been trying to work through and, and help them along. I'm glad to report that we had a community meeting, went very well. Tried to lay out to folks what the cost of, of certain services would be, if, if different avenues had to be taken. People were very receptive. They were, they, the fire department was looking for recruits to come out and become a part of the organization. I believe they had about 10 people there about sign up. So this request that they had tonight was to buy turnout gear for those new people to help them get trained up quicker and move it along. They want to expedite the purchases of that instead of taking a three-month procurement process. So appreciate you all supporting that, and I hope and pray that they will get themselves back on their feet very good and take care of their business.
Thank you. Mr. Petry?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Gilbert?
Couple of things, and just to follow up on this Moyoc small area plan. I think each one of the persons that are participating on this advisory board, we are going to have a public meeting on June 10th at 7:00 PM at the United Methodist, or Moyoc Methodist Church. That facility will house about 100 persons. So those of you that are interested in coming in and putting in your public comments, I invite you to come out on June 10th at 7:00 PM for that. Another item, I am on the advisory board for the Northeastern Workforce Development Board. And currently, there is a grant still available through the Northeastern Workforce Development through June 30th to give businesses the opportunity that if they have an employee that's going to be laid off, and there's a possibility of some retraining to prevent that layoff, they can request funds from the Northeast Workforce Development Board. So I encourage you to call Natalie Roundtree, she's the director at the Northeast Workforce Development. Her number is 252-426-5753, 252-426-5753. It's an excellent opportunity, and before this funding runs out that's been given to this grant, I encourage businesses that are in that position to please contact them. That's all I have for tonight.
I really don't have anything tonight. I'm afraid to comment, I might get audited by the IRS, or the Department of Justice may be tapping my microphone. So I'm gonna end with no comments tonight and, and turn it over to the county manager.
I will do the same. Nothing tonight.
All right. We need a motion to, we need a motion to recess as the Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very quick on this one, but we are here to present the budget for next year for the spending of the oxy tax. By statute, the statute allows the Board of Commissioners to levy the oxy tax. It created the Tourism Development Authority, which is you. You sit as that. The TDA is actually eight, eight members. It's you and the tourism director is the, the eighth member. And the county finance director serves as your finance officer. We actually have three different oxy tax that we collect. Each one has a unique distribution requirement of it. And you can see that here. And the key is going to the definition of tourism-related expenditures versus promotion. And this is a breakdown. In the upcoming budget, we're proposing to collect $9.9 million in oxy tax. $3.3 million is required by statute to be used to promote travel and tourism, which the budget shows that it will be. And the 6.6 can go to tourism-related expenditures. So to handle the promote and travel tourism piece first, here's a definition. It basically is to market and promote Currituck County. This supports our tourism department budget. You can see that 18% of the, the 3.3 is involved in personnel, 14% in operating. The vast majority, 2/3 of that, is actually going into promotional items. And that breaks down in this fashion. Over half of what we do marketing-wise is we do what's internet-based marketing. 11% now is in print ads, 13% is in promotions, 12% in television ads, 8%, 6% is in material, and 1% in trade shows. The other half, the 6.6, it's in tourism-related expenditures. This one is, can be spent on anything that's in the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, so it's in your discretion of what we spend it on. It can go to, and this is the, the piece, I think, that gets lost a lot in public conversation. It can go to not only lodging, but it can go to lodging, meeting facilities, recreational facilities, or convention centers for tourists or business travel.
Get out.
So the definition actually is, is a lot broader than historically is known. The second thing that I will point to, to your attention, it's, it's actually not in this, is it, there is no geographic requirement of where the money is spent. It says in Currituck County at your discretion. And the last note in there is, the last time this was amended, they threw in beach nourishment. We actually can spend it on beach nourishment if, if we ever had a...
Well, and the other piece to that is said tourism-related capital expenditures.
Yes. Here is the largest things that we are projecting to, to use this money for, to continue our efforts at Maple Commerce Perk to build the recreational facility there, to fund not only the, the, the piece Mr. Idlet spoke of earlier, we add additional service level of EMS from the Outer Banks to, we ramp up for the summer season at a cost of 1.1 million. We also increased ramp up for law enforcement, additional law enforcement for the summer season for a million dollars. It was asked, I think the commissioner asked how we fund Whalehead Trust. We give them $800,000 a year, comes out of oxy tax. The Rural Center, I think that question came up, how that's funded, it's funded out of oxy tax. The Rural Center amount is not only the operational, which I think is only about 200,000. The remainder of that is the funding for the Heritage Museum. I mentioned earlier that we're looking to build a public access site on the Outer Banks, being funded out of oxy tax. And lifeguard services, those by far are the, the large expenditures out of oxy tax. This has the same schedule as the county operating budget. We're presenting it tonight. We're asking the Board of Commissioners if you would set the public hearing for your next meeting, June 3rd, which at time, you may or may not adopt your budget, but you have to have it adopted by July 1st. This budget also will be on the county website. It will be included within the binders we put out publicly, and I'll be happy to answer the questions you might have.
Questions for the county manager? All right, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing and possible adoption for our June 3rd meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Need a motion to adjourn from the Tourism Development Authority, reconvene as a Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next item is a closed session pursuant to NC General Statutes 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice from the county attorney regarding a potential claim against the county and for the following pending lawsuit, Swan Beach Corolla LLC, uh... Versus Currituck County. And we need that, someone to make that as a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please reconvene in the boardroom.